Doors, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Randy Horst, here.
Banstra.
Here.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Here.
Score, here.
For those of you that may be attending via telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during dedicated public forums. I would ask that in the meantime, you'd please keep your microphones or telephones on mute till you wish to speak. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Some support.
Answer for Brander Horst? It wasn't Hopkins. Hopkins, Brander Horst. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Randy Horst.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yeah.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have an opportunity for anyone wishing to address counsel regarding an agenda item. I ask that you come forward to the microphone, please state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony Baco, 11702 Neil Drive. I'd like to speak tonight just briefly on the item on the consent agenda. I believe it's number five on there regarding the petition that has been submitted to the city. First, I want to thank the mayor for setting some time aside for me a couple of weeks ago to discuss this together. I think it helped clear up kind of what we're trying to accomplish here on behalf of the Keeping Pella Family Friendly and the Protect My Innocence Group. Number five on the consent agenda tonight is Resolution 6442 entitled Resolution Accepting Petition, Requesting An Ordinance Repealing or Replacing Chapter 22 of the City Code Library Board of Trustees. Just a little background on that, to bring people up to speed. I believe Mr. Hopkins wasn't here on April 5th that night. That night, the council discussed whether having a referendum led by the council to rewrite the guidance and governance of that for the public library was something they wanted to participate in. And after much discussion that night, good discussion, council members DeYoung, Score, Banstra, and Carl Stone stated they were not in favor of proceeding, which is fine. So what that does then, once that decision was made, was that it then allows the citizens to then drive their own referendum, which is come by way of petition. So then, once the council elected not to take action, we then met with the county auditor and discussed what the process was for working on that code and repealing of that. We worked through that, initiated an outline in the State of Iowa Code 362.4, which is petitions of electors, which is also in your packet. I believe you got a copy of that code. For the petition to be valid, needed 283 signatures, which is 10% of the previous election, which is a requirement. We submitted 761 signatures. The signatures were then processed through the city attorney and the city clerk, to which 26 were rejected because of their proximity within the city of Pella and the extraterritorial district and all that kind of stuff. So that left us with 735, which was still well above the 283 required. So, based on State of Iowa Code 392.5 subset B, which is Library Board, which states, "The proposal may be submitted to the voters at any city election by the council on its own motion. Upon receipt of a valid petition as defined in Section 362.4, requesting that a proposal be submitted to voters, the council shall submit the proposal at the next regular city election." So what we're here asking tonight is that this petition vote be included in the September local option sales tax vote. It doesn't cost the city anymore to do that, because it could be part of that ballot. So the nice part is the citizens don't have to pay any extra money. And we believe it'll enhance the voter turnout for the mayor and council's request for the local option sales tax commitments. So it'll help get more people there, and we think that would be a benefit. As a reminder, and I think this is really important, the vote only pertains to the governance of the Pella Public Library. The vote has nothing to do with the contents of the Pella Public Library, only the governance. So that's what this petition is about. It should also be noted that if the council chooses not to include it on the September ballot, which is your choice, it will, by state code, be included in the November 2023 city election. So it doesn't go away. It just gets prolonged. And so, we would ask that it be included in the September ballot to get it handled and get it put to sleep. It should also be noted that the documents and procedures have been reviewed by Attorney Christine Stone and Logan Brundage of the Allers Law Firm, in addition to City Clerk Mandy Smith. Mr. Brundage did participate in the Library Board meeting on February 2, 2022, at 3:00 PM in the Heritage Room at the library. So he's pretty well versed on what is being asked tonight, what the governance looks like today. In your packets, you'll find a letter from me in there. The ordinance that was drafted by Christine Stone is in there, and the two codes that I've referenced here tonight are also in your packet for your review. So what we're asking again tonight, just as a review, is that the vote be included in the September local option sales tax vote and not be prolonged until 2023. I think everybody would like to see that be handled and put to bed. So are there any unanswered questions that would prohibit you from wanting to include that on the ballot in September that I could try to answer for you tonight?
I would say that the one, when I first read this, the one is that little five-letter word called "shall." You said we have, the city council has a choice. I don't think we have a choice. I think it has to be at the next regular city election. If it was drafted by the council, then we have the choice, if I'm reading that other section correctly that you mentioned.
So, Councilmember Banstra, according to the city attorney, you have a choice to bring it ahead, if you'd like to, to the September one. If you choose not to, then it would be on the November ballot regardless. So you really have the opportunity here to move it ahead if you choose to. You don't have to. You have the right to do that. So we did question that with the city attorney to get some clarification on that, just to make sure we were all on the same page. But anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them, but if not, thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
For it. Brander Horst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randy Horst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstra.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yeah.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, discussion of renewal of local option sales and services tax. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. I'll be back on my microphone just a bit. But for those of you who are, I'm on slide number two this evening. As Mayor DeWort stated, what we're here to this evening to talk about is the potential renewal of the city's local option sales and services tax, just to get the council up to speed and the members of the audience up to speed on this item. Our current local option sales and services tax expires on December 31st, 2023. Now, the proposed referendum date that we are considering at the staff level is September 13th, 2022. So that would put the referendum approximately 15 months before the tax expiration date on it as well. Now, one of the key items to keep in mind when we talk about renewal of the city's local option and sales and services tax is the last item that we did this. We're coming off the current tax as approved by the citizens of Pella for a 12-year period of time. And we have listed up on the big board how the current proceeds were spent on the last local option tax and just to explain these line items. The lost revenue that was approved by the citizens of Pella that was collected in the city of Pella and distributed by the state's formula was just over $14,600. We currently have a redistribution agreement with Marion County, Iowa, that redistributes about 8% of the city's Marion County, excuse me, local option collection to the city of Pella. And we'll explain that here very shortly, but that was right around $3.6 million. And then, as far as the categories that we had down here, if you look up here, these were the categories that we had. The big ticket item on the local option sales and services tax was really two projects. We had the Pella Sports Park, which was in renovations in the city's indoor pool that we had. But one of the items I'd like to point out is if you look at the street projects and the property tax relief, if you wanted a simplification of how the projects with the sales tax proceeds were spent the last time, about 50% of the tax was spent on property taxes and road infrastructure. About 50% was spent on what I would call all dear life projects as well. So overall, we had right around where we anticipate by the time the tax expires on December 31st, 2023, right around $18.2 million worth of proceeds. And the distribution of the projects, or the approved projects and how it was actually spent are listed up on the big board. Again, the key takeaway is about 50% was spent on property tax and road projects. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as council is aware, on April 19th, we talked about the city's long-term facilities plan, the relator base plan. And on that night, we talked about potential improvements to the city's community center, as well as a new indoor recreational center for the community. Now, the key takeaway and how it relates to tonight's discussion is when we talked about the city's financial commitment, one of our key revenue sources was new local option sales and services taxed. So those projects tie directly into what we are considering this evening. Now, as far as the referendum itself and the categories and really what we're looking for direction from the council this evening, is on any referendum that the city has, we must designate a percentage of the local option sales and services tax that will be utilized for property tax relief. And just to make sure we get clear direction from the council on this item, we started off that proposal at zero percent. And it's really just meant to generate discussion by the city council on that as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in explaining the redistribution agreement, you'll notice when we talk about potentially how we're doing a referendum in September of this year, staff would recommend that any referendum that we hold is conditional upon the city's redistribution agreement with Marion County being renewed. And the purpose for that is Pella generates right around 60% of the sales tax that's generated in Marion County. But as far as the state's distribution formula, who does the distribution to the city of Pella, we receive right around 28% of that. And the reason for this is how the sales tax is actually generated or distributed to the cities and the counties that we share with in Marion County, is it's not distributed on how it's generated. It's distributed on 75% on your population and 25% on your property assessed valuations in the years 1984 through 1986. So in looking at this, with the redistribution from Marion County and their 8% of what they collect, that brings us up to 37% total collections in Marion County. So from our standpoint, with the redistribution agreement, we generate 60%. The state formula, we receive 28%. Marion County redistributes 8% of their proceeds. That puts us up to 37%. And I would maintain the redistribution agreement is an important item for everyone in Marion County, because if you look at it, without Pella generating the tax in our community, roughly 60% of the sales tax of Marion County would not be available for use by other entities. And that would be a significant hit to any entity that's receiving local option sales tax. That would include Marion County, the city of Knoxville, Pleasantville, all the little cities in Marion County as well. So from our standpoint, we believe the redistribution agreement is justified based on the amount of tax that's collected in Pella. And that would be one of the key items that we would recommend be as part of any local option sales and services tax is that redistribution agreement would be to be in place.
Let's go ahead, Mandy.
Now, as far as the effective date on the proposed ballot language, we're looking at a new tax that starts on January 1st, 2024. The term would be for 20 years is what we're proposing. Would be contingent upon successful local option renewal agreement with Marion County. And the proposed projects that we have listed up here on the big board, again, we're starting off with property tax relief at zero percent. That's intended to generate discussion by council. I want to stress that. We have indoor recreation facilities. That would be the new indoor recreation center for the community. We have other recreational facilities. This could be improvements to the city's soccer complex. It could be a proposed new dog park for the community. We have improvements to the city's community center. Infrastructure improvements would be any road project within the city, other community betterment projects, designated by the council. And also, if there's any debt issued for any one of these projects listed up here, we could have the retirement debt incurred for any such purposes or any other lawful purpose. And so tonight, what we're looking for is ultimately directions, and these are the key items we're looking at. We're looking at the term. We believe in order to fund and finance improvements to the city's community center, as well as indoor recreation center, the new tax needs to be at least, it should be referred at a 20-year term. We also believe it should be contingent upon the local option renewal. And these are the proposed projects that are up here. We're going to be seeking input and making sure we have consensus on this tonight. And the reason for this, Mandy, if we can go ahead, please. In order to hold the lost referendum, we have to have 50% of the population or governing bodies that represent 50% of the population in Marion County support this. We have a draft letter to the Marion County Supervisors asking them to support our referendum. We believe there is such support in Marion County simply because Pella generates 60% of the tax in Marion County. And so it's very important, if we send off our notice to Marion County, they're going to consider this at their June 14th meeting. The sitting council wants to proceed with the renewal. It's very important that we have a benchmark, or not a benchmark, but we have an understanding of the projects and really firm up the details of what the local option sales and services tax and the categories we're looking at it, as well as the key terms for our referendum. So once again, ultimately, we're seeking to have a referendum on our local option sales and services tax. That would be held on September 13th of this year. And then, if council is in support of it, we would recommend that there is a motion to approve sending a letter to Marion County that would authorize the tax from the county's standpoint. As far as our official resolution that we would have considered, that would be on June 21st that we would consider that. And so, Mandy, if we can go back to our key terms and what we're looking for guidance from the council on, once again, these are the really key terms of the city of Pella's local option sales and services tax. And we're looking for input and hopefully, I would say consensus this evening on these items. And once again, with that, we're seeking council's directions. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if you'd be willing to have to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So just to reiterate, I'm looking for a motion for approval to direct the staff to deliver the draft letter and resolution support to the Marion County Board Supervisors for consideration during their meeting on June 14th. So do I have a motion? So moved. For it. Answer, DeYoung, any discussion?
I think it makes sense myself is that the, that last line, "Any lawful purpose," that can also include property tax relief, right?
Correct.
So why not give us as much latitude as possible, keep zero in the first number, and have the other ones open?
Does that breakdown of how it's used have to be stated prior to the referendum?
It does not have to be stated. The only thing we have to designate is the percentage that we intend to designate for property tax relief.
That has to be in the referendum?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's really not part of what goes to Marion County anyway, right?
We don't believe so. We believe, like, simply that the request for Marion County is for consideration of support of a referendum on September 13th in the city of Pella.
And I believe all the other incorporated entities in the county have already extended theirs. Is that, I believe that's true.
That is correct.
Is the redistribution agreement you showed at Pella at eight and Knoxville at four, do the little towns get part of that redistribution too?
No, with that redistribution agreement, I don't mean to snicker on this. It's a fairly serious matter. The redistribution agreement is intended to recognize the entities that generate tax in Marion County. In Marion County, 95% of the local option tax is generated by the city of Pella and the city of Knoxville on it. And so, the redistribution agreement was simply intended to redistribute funds that the county receives back to the entities that generate the tax.
And then, so the county is giving up their share of that. And basically, the other smaller cities get their share by nature of the formula?
Yes, the other cities are beneficiaries of the state formula.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstra.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randy Horst.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6443 entitled Resolution Approving Preliminary Platte, Timber View Subdivision Platte 1. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do would approve the preliminary platte for Timber View Platte Number 1. And this is being submitted this evening by the A T I group. Now, the plot that we are considering this evening is just over 46 acres. And what's being proposed with this preliminary platte is roughly 95 buildable lots and one proposed city park. The property's location is shown up on the big board, but generally it's located at the northern end of Hazel Street and Country Club Drive. So if you were to go up to the end of Hazel Street, which is right here, and look at this yellow highlighted area, that is the platte that we're considering this evening. And as the council is aware, but maybe for members in the audience or those watching at home this evening on it, when we talk about plaits, there's two types of plaits that we consider at the city level. One is the preliminary platte, and this is the platte that's really intended to provide an overview of the overall game plan for the development. So there's a lot of talk about public infrastructure, transportation plans, and all the nitty-gritty details that are associated with a long-term plan. So this is the long-term vision of the platte. Now, oftentimes, what developers will do is, even though we're considering the platte for this entire area, when they get down to the final platte and they start building the street that we're about ready to show this evening within the development, they'll often do that in phases. And those phases, once the infrastructure's built, the final platte, and that will be the portion that's used for land transfer of transfer purposes at the county as well. And along with the final platte will be the dedication of the public infrastructure project as well. So the differences between this, tonight, we're talking about the preliminary platte, which is the overall game plan for the infrastructure that's involved, or the public infrastructure that's involved for the development. Now, as far as zoning is concerned, most of the zoning that we have up here is low-density, single-family residential and A1A. Excuse me. It was actually rezoned by the city council this area earlier this year to R1A, which is a form of low-density residential. We'll explain that here in just a bit. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the criteria that we need to judge the platte this evening, what the zoning ordinance requires is the platte needs to be in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, as well as the city's subdivision ordinance. Now, we have a description of when the preliminary platte occurs under the city code as well. And I think we've covered this as well. And again, we're talking about the overall lot layout, as well as the public infrastructure requirements for the development this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, what we have up on the big board is the preliminary platte that we are considering this evening. And as you can see, the platte area that we have in 46 acres, we do have an extension of Hazel Street that would be up to the northwest. And ultimately, we're going to show this here in just a bit, but the long-term plans would be is the connection of the street over to Fountain View Drive that would connect up on Main Street, or in that neighborhood right there. And that's an important key, or that's a key component in the city's long-term transportation plan. This is included within our comprehensive plan as well. And we do have a secondary offshoot of Hazel Street that would happen and occur right up here as well. And then, we have the future area that would be future, considered by the city. The city council in the future wants the developer develops plans for this area. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the zoning for the property, we mentioned before that the city council earlier this year rezoned the property. And as you can see, the property is really R1A. And really, when we look at R1A, the differences between R1A and R1 is two things. R1, the minimum lot area, is 10,000 square feet. R1A is 8,500 square feet. So it's not a huge difference there. But from a use standpoint, what occurs of R1A is the allowance of what's called single-family attached homes. So these would be single-family homes. They'd be two buildable units within the city, and they'd be attached via common wall, but they'd be separate ownerships or two different parties could own those homes on it as well. And so that is the difference with it. Those are two general differences. But again, it's a low-density residential zoning district for this entire area that we have up here. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, what we have listed up here is the phases that the developer intends to do. There's four phases that are lined up, proposed by the developer. Overall, we're looking at roughly 95 housing lots as well. And when you look at the overall density of the preliminary platte, it fits well within the low-density residential parameters of the city's zoning ordinance as well. And so we have some additional detail that's located right here. It is important to note that the developer is included. And just over 1.25 acre parcel would be dedicated to the city of Pella as a future city park as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we mentioned earlier on about the transportation plan. When we look at the city's comprehensive plan and you were to look at this area, what you would see is two street connections out here, future street connections. We have the eventual extension of Park Lane or East Park Lane out to 240th Place. And also, when you look at here, we also have the extension of Hazel Street within this general area that would go up to Fountain View Drive in the city's comprehensive plan. The preliminary platte that we're considering tonight does include the Hazel Street or any connection or proposal to facilitate, rather, the Hazel Street connection over to Fountain View Drive on it as well. And Park Lane, that is outside the parameters of the development that we would have right now. But as far as shown in the city's comprehensive plan, the two proposed new streets, these are the two that are shown in the comprehensive plan. Well, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the development, what we've done is when you look at Hazel Street up here, once again, this could be a potential route option for the continuance of Hazel Street up to Main Street. And it would also provide a connection up to Fountain View Drive, which would be located right up here. That could be one alternative right here. But again, this would be the general game plan as far as an eventual connection over to Main Street for the development would be this lineup that is being proposed by the developer. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the city's comprehensive plan, when we look at the comprehensive plan, the area that we propose or considering that this evening was identified as low-density residential by the city's comprehensive plan, housing, as council is aware, was a key strategic priority under the comprehensive plan with that. And when we look at the density that's being proposed by the developer for the preliminary platte, along with the consideration that housing is a key strategic priority for the city of Pella, and also with the connection to the northwest that is identified with the, or the extension of Hazel Street, excuse me, to the northwest, we believe the preliminary platte satisfies the requirements as in conformance of the city's comprehensive plan. Well, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I think we stated that. But overall, from our summary, in our opinion, is we believe that the preliminary platte we're considering this evening meets the minimum requirements of the city's zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and also conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. Based on our findings, we are recommending approval of the platte estimated this evening. It's important to note that this platte was considered by the planning and zoning commission at their May 23rd meeting and was approved on unanimous votes. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. If you'd be willing to have to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Could I get a motion for approval? So moved. Hopkins, score. Any discussion? Questions?
So the extension of Hazel Street, that would still be a later phase, all the way to Main, correct?
I, yes. Mandy, if we can go back to slide number 13. Councilmembers for, that's an excellent question this evening. And really, when we look at phase, actually, phase one by the developer, and this is likely what you would see if council were to approve the preliminary platte, the developer would start on would be this general area right here. So when we look at their extension to the northwest corner of their parcel, that would be done in future phases. Now, as far as the ultimate connection over to Main Street, with this green highlighted area, that really depends on how things play out with the development. And really, I'll state first and foremost, that's entirely at the discretion of the city council when that street extension is necessary. What I'm going to describe is the process that would take place if council views that that street extension is necessary in the future to accommodate the future development or additional development on the site. At that point in time, the green highlighted area would become a city project. It would be initiated by the city of Pella. So the city of Pella would be the builder of the green section. Now, if we had a developer of these parcels that was interested in developing these parcels, that could very likely be a requirement of their subdivision code requirements would be that exchange, street extension as well. So if it's a city-initiated project to accommodate additional development on here, then the city council would authorize and determine when that segment would be needed.
I just, I get a little bit worried with that phase one, that that's a lot of housing to add just to Hazel Street. Or sorry, like, wouldn't they go to get the one way out?
Phase one that we have right here, and Danny helping out and Jerry, based on our belief, is about, I believe, 37 homes, correct, on that? We believe at full buildout that Hazel Street is capable of handling that level of traffic. Now, when you look at it with the caveat Now, when you look at it with the caveat, we're going to have to continue to monitor development on this area. But when you look at the entire ninety-five units that were based on phase one, two, three, and four, that's when I think consideration should be made as far as the secondary outlet to Main Street or the connection to Main Street in the future. But phase one, we feel fairly comfortable with the traffic flow of phase one of the development and the timelines with that. When you look at future phases, our suggestion would be is consideration of that Main Street extension at that time for future phases of the development.
When you say future phases, is that beyond the entirety of phase one, or is...
I think realistically, when you look at it, and again, the developers, what we've focused on almost entirely is this phase one, which would be this area right here on it, and be the thirty-seven homes. When you start looking at phase two, it's likely phase two could be done in conjunction with phases three and four. And when that happens, and when you look at potentially ninety-five homes, we think it makes sense to revisit the western, what we call the western connection. At that time, you determine if it's needed.
That looks like a whole lot more than thirty-seven homes.
That's phase one.
That's phase one.
Phase one isn't that whole section.
Phase one would be right up here. This would be right over here. There's a considerable amount of homes in phases three and four.
Then when you said there's ninety-five building lots, just thirty-seven of them are single-family detached. So you really double that for numbers of families then, right, on those thirty-seven? So how many of those single-family detached are in phase one?
Ten, single-family attached. Jerry, if you could help me out, I believe we have ten single-family attached in phase one, is that correct?
That's correct.
So majority of the single-family attached are going to be in phases three and four, I believe.
So then you'd have twenty families with that and twenty-seven in single-family homes. Would that be right? If there's thirty-seven...
Casey, Casey, you want to address that question?
I think what we have up here is, when you look at the development overall, there's fifty-eight single-family attached and thirty-seven single-family homes detached.
But then with thirty-seven, you'd take that times two, right, for numbers of families living...
Either way around. So single-family attached would be two homes per buildable lot.
Okay.
So ninety-five overall.
Okay.
That's what, from our standpoint, when you start getting into that phases three and four, Mandy, if we can go back, please, on that, when you start getting into these areas right in here, that's when we think consideration should be given, or at least reviewed again, to determine if that western connection is needed to facilitate development.
I think that's a mandate.
Yeah.
If you're going to go beyond phase one, that connectivity goes in.
I would think that not having that second entry exit would be a hindrance for property sales. And then, when you look at phase, particularly at phase three, that those are very condensed homes. I know there's one in phase three where the frontage is, you know, they're forty feet across, eighty with the combination of the two. That's pretty tight.
I think these are very good points to consider on it. And overall, based on our review, we feel comfortable with thirty-seven that they have for phase one. When you start getting into phase two, three, and four, again, we would suggest revisiting that on it as well.
Would there be, would there need to be approval upon each phase? Would it, it's going to come to council?
Yeah. What the developers' intentions are, and what they're currently working on, and we're working with them, is on the phase one. So it'd be up here. And they plan to do this in incremental. As far as the timing on phase two and three and four, it really depends, it's our understanding how sales go in phase one.
So just review for us, this is the preliminary plat, but they can't start building with a preliminary plat again?
Well, if we approve the preliminary plat, oftentimes, what happens with the developer, I would say in this case, probably not. There's more to the development story, one of the items, and I would say not just with Timber View, but any development that I would say that's really geared towards residential housing. A key thing when you look at these green field sites is the cost of public infrastructure. The streets, just in phase one, are roughly two, the streets and the public infrastructure is roughly two point four million dollars. So we're working on an urban removal plan that closely matches and will be reviewed with council. P and Z has already had a work session on the urban removal plan. But we're working on with the developers on an urban removal plan that's largely phase one of development. So in answering council member Hopkins' question, because of the cost of public infrastructure, it will likely be done incrementally in phases on it as well. And all focus up to date has been on phase one of the development.
All right. Anything else? All right, we need to vote on the resolution. All in favor, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six, four, 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 entitled Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for Lally Innovation Park Plat. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, what we're talking about this evening is accepting the public infrastructure for Lally Innovation Park. We do have a picture of the new corporate headquarters facility that just opened up in Pella upon the big board as well. Tonight, what we're talking about, when we talk about public infrastructure, is the sanitary sewer system, as well as the water main extension that was made to the site. Now, overall, when we look at the sanitary sewer system, we have roughly five hundred and thirty-five linear feet of eight-inch sanitary sewer mains. There is roughly a seventeen-hundred linear foot extension of water mains to the site to accommodate the development as well. The engineers reporting to us and our staff also agrees that these public improvements have been built according to the city's standards, and we are recommending acceptance this evening. But with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horst, De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call the roll.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six, four, four, five, entitled Resolution Improving Agreement for Subdivision Improvements with BBM Properties LLC and Premier Development, Inc. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For those following at home, on slide number seventeen this evening, and as Mayor Dwork stated, what we have is a proposed agreement for the Fairway Meadows improvement. It is showing up on the big board, but just orientated council. The area that we're talking about is just off the Boslon Drive, and is the red highlighted area that we're talking about this evening. And what I would say is really what we're doing is updating the development for a change in ownership of the development. And as background on this matter, in two thousand and seventeen, as the council approved a preliminary final plat with Premier Development for the purpose of this area this evening that we are considering. What was proposed by the developer at the time was roughly seven lots. That was known as Fairway Meadows subdivision. Now, as far as this, what we also did at the time, when you look at the stormwater detention for the development, the stormwater detention currently drains into the city's pond. And so what we had at the time was a development agreement with the developer that involved improvements to the pond to accommodate the additional stormwater detention that would be needed to serve this development as well. Now, subsequent to two thousand and seventeen, Premier Development has sold the properties to BBM Properties. So really, when we look at this agreement that we have, then we also have one outstanding item, is the stormwater improvements have not been completed to date. So the agreement that we're considering is very similar to the agreement that we considered back in two thousand and seventeen for the development, and largely focused on stormwater detention improvements. So let's go ahead, Mandy. What's listed up on the big board is the specifics, what the agreement requires for stormwater detention. Now, it's also important to note what this development agreement the developer is requiring to submit a performance bond to the city of Pella. The performance bond simply states that the developer does not do the improvements. The city can undertake the work, or we can hire a contractor to do the work. As far as the funding of it, at that time, the bond would be obligated to fund the cost of the improvements. We believe the stormwater detention improvements for the development is going to cost around forty thousand dollars on it. And so that's a key requirement from the development agreement as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Boy, I jumped ahead a little bit of myself. I kind of overlooked one of the key components of the agreement. But the agreement calls for, as far as the developer making the improvements, they can't start on the stormwater detention, and they can't make improvements to the city's pond before November first, because we do not want interference with the city's golf course or the Boslon Golf Course. And they have to have them completed by December thirty-first of this year as well. Now, it is important to note, when we talk about stormwater detention, not all of this is attributed to the new homes that have been built on the property, but it does show what's occurred since two thousand and seventeen, as well as occurred in two thousand and twenty-two. So stormwater detention improvements are needed on the pond. And if you want to look at this agreement simply, we approved a similar agreement in two thousand and seventeen. We're simply updating the agreement to reflect the new ownership of the subdivision, that's BBM Properties. And also, what we're including in here as well is the requirement of the performance pond. And that ensures that the development or these improvements to the city's pond to accommodate the additional stormwater from the development will be paid on that as well. But overall, the developer is required, they can't start the improvements before November first, and they have to have them completed by December thirty-first of this year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Spore. Hopkins. Any discussion, questions?
In the process, will they be rescuing all the balls that I did with that?
Maybe get the project paid for by digging balls out of there. All right. All in favor, motion, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call the roll.
Spore?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number one, zero, one, two, entitled An Ordinance Amending the City Code of the City of Pella, Iowa for the Purpose of Adding a New Chapter Thirty-nine Establishing a City Ambulance Service, and this is the second reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Dwork stated, what we're entertaining this evening here, considering this evening, is an ordinance that would establish the ambulance service under city code. Now, as the mayor stated, this would, currently, the Pella Community Ambulance has done a yeoman's job for our community. They've provided ambulance service to this community over the past thirty-seven years. We're going to be talking a lot about the ambulance during policy and planning, so I'll save some of my positive comments with this. What we're simply doing is we're adopting a code section that allows us to operate an ambulance under the city code. This is one of what I would call the charter agreements, not charter agreements, one of our main agreements that we need to approve before we begin ambulance service, which we're currently targeting July first of this year. The other big agreements that we have is the transfer agreement. That's an agreement that addresses the assets of the Pella Community Ambulance and how they will be transferred to the city of Pella. And along with that, we will also be doing the third item that we have, and we're going to be dedicating a good portion of tonight's policy and planning session to a financial overview for the ambulance as well. But this is the legislative authority, which simply adopts the Pella ambulance and establishes them under city code. Now, as far as the code provisions are, I'll go briefly through this item. As far as that supervision of the Pella ambulance, it would be under the ambulance chief who would report to the city administrator. As far as the board is concerned, we have a temporary advisory board. It would be a six-member board that would be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council. And it would be established to receive initially the transition of the ambulance service from the nonprofit agency to the city of Pella. And it would be through the end of this year that the board would be in place, or through December thirty-first of this year. Now, as far as service outside the city limits, the ordinance does allow the ambulance to serve areas outside the city limits as well. But it also states that since the ambulance is currently serving areas outside the city limits, it has authority to do so through December thirty-first of this year. Any service passed December thirty-first of this year for areas outside the city of Pella would need to have an approved agreement with the city council. We'll be talking a little bit about those agreements this evening, and we do have some information on that as well. And as far as the fees are concerned, they would be approved via a resolution by the city council on an annual basis as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horst, De Young, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call the roll.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the third reading of this ordinance. It's been the rules.
Okay, Bannster, Spore. Motion to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call the roll.
Bannister?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Brandon Horst, Bannister. Any discussion?
Does this, Mike, have to be adopted effective July one? Is there upon publication, or doesn't matter?
It's upon publication, and as long as we have it published before July first of the ordinance, it'll be valid.
Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call the roll.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. Abstract of Bill's number two, one, zero, four. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Brandon Horst? Hopkins? Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Vote no, Mandy. Please call the roll.
Reinderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, any council member have any other business that needs to be addressed this evening? It looks like we have five things to discuss. We'll start with employee compensation review. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those following at home on slide number 22 this evening, as Mayor Dwork stated, the purpose of this session is to discuss a review of the city's compensation plan. Now, as background on this, the city's compensation plan in its current form that we have was developed in 2018. And from an HR standpoint and industry standpoint, generally a company and associates at the firm that developed the city's compensation plan were here, they would tell you that every three to four years you need to review your plan. So please keep that in mind as we consider this item. Now, when we look at the industry standards and they say they really need to look at an external market review every three to four years to make sure you're within markets on your compensation plan, that's one item under consideration. The other item that we have this evening is, we're going to be talking later on this evening about beginning operations with the Pella ambulance. That's a large workforce that we're adding into the plan. Anytime you add employees or new classifications into the plan, you always had two items you need to make sure with the Pella ambulance that were both competitive from an external market standpoint. But very, very important when we talk about new operations, we also need to make sure that we maintain internal equity as well. So when you look at really the two driving forces behind this compensation review, we would say that industry standards recommends every three to four years you need to look at your compensation plan to make sure you're within market, a market on that. And then two, we are adding in a rather large operation with the Pella Community Ambulance as well. So for me, we want to make sure overall, what we're trying to ensure is that we're within market for the city's workforce, both from an external standpoint, while making sure we're within market from an external standpoint. We also want to make sure that we don't upset any type of internal equity that we've already established as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe we said this, really, when you look at Condray and what's being proposed is an external review as well as an internal review of the system as well. Now, a little bit about where they would look at as far as they compare us to other Iowa cities and employers in the region on that as well. Now, overall, the review, these are the tasks that Condray would complete as well. The review would take approximately 90 days and we have a fee of $27,500 that Condray has proposed for the system. We are recommending approval of it this evening for the two items that we've talked about. But also I would state that there is one area that I would say that where I wouldn't call it struggled, but we want to make sure we're on top of is our public safety and specifically the police department as well, where we have experienced some employee turnover with it. And it's been my experience, anytime you talk about public safety, it's better to be on the front end of the curve and be proactive in addressing any type of issues that you may have with market than on the back end as well. So with that, we are proposing proceeding with the Condray review. If council is in favor of it this evening, we would come back at a future council meeting. We try to hit the June 21st meeting for a formal contract with Condray, but it could be as late as July 4th. But regardless of when we look at doing this, we'd ultimately look to have this review done by September 30th of this year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. If you more than happy to answer any questions, the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay? But for Mike concerning this?
Sounds good.
Yeah? I'm a huge fan. One question, would, so this is just compensation really as an analysis, right? Would they give any like indication around like other benefits in like your total rewards packages?
We easily could. I'm going to speak for Cory and Stacy. If I say something that's wrong, please correct me. What we have in front of you is mainly an employee compensation review. If we want to add on a total, I'd say compensation package that would look at those benefits as well, we sure can add that to there. I don't believe we necessarily have a quote from Condray to do that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy and Cory on that. But we can certainly do that if council desires to do that.
Right, I was, to speak fairness, I cannot look at the whole package rather than just the paycheck.
Generally, the reason why, well, in our case, most Iowa governments are fairly similar. Most cities are fairly similar more from a benefit standpoint as far as being hypers. And our health insurance packages are traditionally been roughly the same. But we could also add that in just to make sure. I think that's a good suggestion if council would like to do that.
I'd look at Stacy and Cory's wallet for your thoughts.
You know, and we actually discussed possibly doing even a, if you look at some of the benefit options even prior to this year, and of course, benefits are tough everywhere. And even possibly this next year, could do a survey, just kind of seeing what our employees are really looking for as well with that very diverse employee group right now. So kind of talk a little bit more even about possibly doing a survey just to get feedback from them.
I think a survey is a great idea. And I also think, to your point of like having a diverse group of needs, I think even benchmarking what else is out there from like a flex standpoint of what offerings should be available. So I would certainly take it into consideration.
Very good suggestion. You certainly could add that in to the scope of services.
It's not just intergovernmental competition for people. We're competing with you.
I know, I'm sorry.
What does implement and administer the program that last will appoint mean? Because I thought that might be more something that the staff does versus a conroy and associates.
Let me take a stab at this one. I think anytime you have a compensation plan, and let's say that there would be, this would probably be more the case what happened in 2018. Now, let's say there's potentially could be significant changes to this and meeting with the employees and explaining any type of new pay system that we would have if there are changes, the consultant would be there and available and help us implement the system. But by and large, this would fall on our HR and city hall staff as far as implementation or facilitating that with the employees. The consultant would be available to help explain to employees as well as the city council on that. And that's our interpretation as far as implementing any type of new system would be assistance to the city.
Yeah, because I was going to say, assume there'd be a poll pointing there that says council review and approval?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, what would happen on this is we'd have this initial review done, and our goal would be to try to get this done within 30, 90 days. But hopefully we have some data to share with the city council before that and ultimately before there's a formal vote on the new pay plan or any proposed changes with the review. We would hold a work session at the city council level, go over the results and the findings of the consultant, the changes that are being recommended, if any. And then after that time, depending on council's, I would say, review, thoughts, consensus, if there's consensus, we'll maybe have a formal vote. There may be additional work that we need to do with the consultant as well, so. But I think the point is, is just because we proceed with the contract does not mean it's automatically approved. City council still has the final vote on it, so.
Okay, sounds like we got a contract ready for me up there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to amended wage scale for fiscal year '22, '23?
As we cover these next two items, please keep in mind what we just discussed. We're going to proceed with the consultant to review the city's compensation plan, both from an external equity position as well as internal equity, and we're also going to look at benefits. So with that, what's being proposed as far as our wage scale adjustments on this as well as the health insurance premiums are by and large would traditionally have been included in the plan. Now, as far as the amended wage scale, we do have an across-the-board proposal of 3.2% for all employees that would be effective on July 1st of this year. That is based off of what our scale is tied to, that's the employment cost index. Now, the data that we got from the employment cost index from March 2021 through March 2022, this is the latest data that we have on it, indicated that it was about a 3.2% increase. During the budget process, if you may recall, we had significant discussion on the across-the-board increase as well. At that time, we had a budgetary amount of two and a half percent. So this proposed increase is above that, about $50,000. We believe as far as the city's overall budget, that we can give a 3.2% increase without impacting the city's property taxes or utility rates as well. So from our rate standpoint, it'd be rate or property tax neutral, we believe that we could afford the additional $50,000 that would take to award a 3.2% cost to living, high cost to living adjustment, wage increase to the city's workforce. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation on this item, and we're looking for council direction.
Was that employment cost index all employees or is that in a government or municipal employee bucket?
Cory, would you like to answer that?
That's all of government employees.
Just government, not private sector?
Not private index, yeah.
But all federal, state, local?
Yep.
Okay. Real world?
It's not a real world, but I'm happy to see it over 2.5, that's for sure.
I'm seeing numbers more like 5%.
Couple of things to keep in mind on our, we're doing the employee external review as well. So again, this just keeps in place what's been done in the past as far as our index, it's tied to the index. We're going to go on and take a look at those external adjustments. Right now, if you were to come back and we didn't have a benchmark on what we're doing, that's part of the reason why we're looking at the external reviews as well. So we're hoping to shake out some of those items if there's any out there from a market standpoint or market and equity standpoint. And that's why we're proposing the 3.2 with the realization we're going to be looking at the overall compensation plan as well. That's separate instinct from this action.
And we know it's tied back in three months from now. Say we should do that very well.
Yeah, I was going to say, this will take effect July 1st, and then after we get that certain way, we may have to make another adjustment with that.
I think it's a smart step.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to health insurance.
All right, Mr. Mayor, once again, very similar as far as the city's health insurance plan with this, when we look at proposed increases, I believe Wilmark Blue Cross Blue Shield is proposing a increase of just about 10% in our premiums. Now, we are proposing a 10% increase in the premiums charged for the city's health insurance plan. What we have listed up on the big board is the cost of the plan. Roughly when you look at the cost of the plan, the city of Pella as it applies to health insurance premiums is responsible for 90% of the cost of the health insurance premiums. The city's employees are responsible for 10% of the cost. So this just increases proportionally a 10% increase for both the employees as well as the city of Pella. Again, the recent budget process that we went through, the new budget here rather, I mistakenly stated, or not mistakenly stated, that would start on July 1st this year includes a 10% increase. So this is in accordance with the city's budget, the 10% increase. And before processing the increase and proceeding with the formal vote on it, Mayor, we are looking for direction from the city council on this item.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Has program been working? Is this good coverage?
I think it, I'm going to qualify my statement. Health insurance, and it's always been this way, it's extremely challenging. I think the combination that we have where we incorporate a portion of the self-funding portion of the plan as well as the full of purchasing private insurance at a discounted rate of, oh, no, discounted rate at a higher deductible plan than what we offer our employees has worked out really well for the city of Pella controlling cost overall, my own personal feeling. If you talk to an employee's standpoint, we got a top-notch workforce. It's extra work for them when it deals with health insurance because you have two plans. You have the Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's often at the higher deductible. And then we have our own internal plans where we buy down those and offer the employees a lower deductible. So there's always a little bit of extra work in dealing with medical expenses on it as well. But overall, from a cost standpoint, it's worked out really well from the city of Pella standpoint.
Okay. Move forward. All right, moving to ambulance transition.
Okay. We have a lot of good information for you tonight. Now, I'm going to preface my comments as it relates to the financial information. We will be sending this information out, so you don't have to worry about taking feverish notes on this or a lot of notes or cookies notes tonight. We will be sending this out, and unfortunately, I don't have the handouts for you this evening. And as Mayor Dwork stated, the purpose of tonight's discussion is truly provide an update on the Pella Community Ambulance. We're looking to begin operations on July 1st of this year, which means all formal votes are going to occur on June 21st. So I preface my comments that if you have questions or concerns, now is the time to bring them up and to discuss on the staff as we proceed with the transition of the Pella Community Ambulance to the city of Pella. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the first item we alluded to, one of the benchmark agreements, one of the key agreements when you talk about transitioning the nonprofit agency over to the city of Pella, is what I call the wind down of the nonprofit agency. Now, as council is aware, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the financial significance of taking on the Pella Community Ambulance. We're going to talk about that here very shortly. But one of the key conditions that's always been a factor, not a factor, a condition of the city of Pella is once we take over the ambulance operations, that all assets come to the city of Pella in all means, all its cash investment accounts, all property and equipment of the Pella Community Ambulance would be transitioned over to the city of Pella. There's two legal documents that will need to be approved on June 21st. Unfortunately, we don't have the final version of them. Our attorneys are still working on those matters as well. But simply, they are going to address all the assets that would be transitioned over to the Pella Community, from the Pella Community Ambulance to the city of Pella. They've been reviewed by our legal staff as well as the Pella Community Ambulance Board as well. So with that, it is important to note, in talking about the transfer agreements, from our standpoint, we believe the existing cash investment accounts that the Pella Community Ambulance is adequate to pay all outstanding liabilities of the ambulance before transitioning over to the city of Pella. So we do not believe there would be any outstanding liabilities associated with the Pella Community Ambulance that the city of Pella would inherit. And that's one of the key items from a council standpoint that we absolutely want to make sure is the case. And that's based off our review so far, as we believe that the cash and investments by the Pella Community Ambulance is enough to cover all outstanding liabilities of the ambulance before transitioning over to the city of Pella. So with that, again, we don't have the drafts of the agreements at this time, but is there any questions on those two legal documents that will need to be approved by the city council before the ambulance can begin operations at the city of Pella? And this was always, and we're going to hit harder on this on the financial end of things. I think you'll see this a little bit when we start talking about numbers here very shortly. But this has always been one of the key requirements that we wanted to make sure is that the cash and investments was adequate to take care of any outstanding liabilities associated with the nonprofit agency. Okay, Mandy, let's go ahead. Let's talk about an even bigger item that we have, that's the employees of the Pella Community Ambulance. Now, if you recall, earlier this evening, we authorized, we're trying to direct the staff to proceed with an employee compensation review. We said one of the key items was the number of employees that we would be taking on with the ambulance. And we want to make sure both from a market external standpoint that we are competitive with those employees on there, and it's an essential service for the city of Pella, but also that by taking on the ambulance, that we didn't create any internal equity issues as well, or do our best to avoid those issues if possible. So with that, what we're proposing with the ambulance service is if you look at the employees' wages, what would be offered to the employees is we would be offering their starting wage would be their existing salary and existing compensation system that they currently have. We would also increase that by 3.2%, same as all other city of Pella employees would receive on July 1st. That would be their wage that they would be offered to start employment with the city of Pella. As of July 1st, they would also be eligible to receive any other benefit that any other city employee would receive as well. So from a wage standpoint, our thoughts were take them in at their current wage, increase it by 3.2%, that's across-the-board increase that all employees are receiving. Go through the compensation review. Once we have hard data on that, then we can fit them in the pay structure for the city of Pella. Once that review's done, that should occur sometime hopefully before the end of this fall, right around September 30th is, would be the target date for that review and placement of the ambulance employees in the city's compensation plan. Now, before I go on, is there any questions as far as wages of the Pella ambulance employees and what they would be offered as far as a starting wage for the city of Pella? Okay, let's talk about benefits. And when we talk about benefits, we're really talking about vacation and sick leave. It's our understanding when you look at the full-time employees, the majority of the full-time employees have less than four years of service for the Pella Community Ambulance. And taking on the new employees, what we plan to do is recognize their years of service with the Pella Community Ambulance, the service vacation and sick leave, those would be the only employees that would be generating any type of vacation or sick leave. And what we place them in their schedules, authority to the years of service, recognize the years of service at the Pella Community Ambulance, the majority of them have less than four years on it. It would not be a significant impact to the city of Pella that at least recognizes them. And some of them may be entitled to a little bit higher like the vacation leave than they would if they were just starting off employment with the city of Pella. And from a philosophical approach, before doing this, we want to make sure council was in agreement with that approach.
That's right, thank you.
I know it says the majority have been there for less than four years. Are we, are the ones who have been there for longer? A couple of times?
No, full-time.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Once again, on both the transfer agreement and the employees, June 21st would be the formal action on both those. And so we would have a resolution approving everything that we've talked about from the employees on June 21st, along with those legal documents on June 21st as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. All right, let's talk about the fun stuff, at least I view the fun stuff, the financial impacts of the Pella Community Ambulance. Now, before we start off with what the proposed rates for the service as well as the proposed, I'd say, financial contribution by the city of Pella, what I wanted to do was review the service coverage map of the Pella Community Ambulance. And as you can see on this slide, the city of Pella is located right here. Their service territory is basically this black highlighted area of the black line that you have. And as you can see, it extends almost out to highway, it does extend to Highway 14 and on the west, all the way over to the town of Lighten encompasses basically the Lake Prairie Township both south and north of the city of Pella. So when we look at this area, and the key takeaway as we talk about rates this evening, what we have to also from a philosophical standpoint, and we're not looking for decisions on everything this evening, but we do have just a question from a philosophical approach. When you look at the overall cost to operate the ambulance, how much of this should be subsidized by the city of Pella? And what should be charged or charged to service to serve all these other areas on this as well? These are tough decisions that we'll have to discuss. But as we discuss rates tonight, we don't want to get too far away from where they're So when we look at this area, and the key takeaway as we talk about rates this evening, what we have to also, from a philosophical standpoint, and we're not looking for decisions on everything this evening, but we do have just a question from a philosophical approach. When you look at the overall cost to operate the ambulance, how much of this should be subsidized by the City of Pella? And what should be charged or charged to service to serve all these other areas on this as well? These are tough decisions that we'll have to discuss. But as we discuss rates tonight, we don't want to get too far away from where they're currently serving and where we may serve in the future and what those rates and charges are to serve that area. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Okay. Now, in explaining the ambulance, one of the items that, and this is one of the difficult concepts to get your arms around, is when we talk about service calls, if you were to go back and talk to the chief and Mandy, their assistant chief, they tell you service calls are up, they're going crazy, we're over 1,900 service calls a year. And that's true. They're very, very busy on this as well. But when you look at the number of service calls the agency currently does and how they operate, and again, these would be all future decisions of the City of Pella, there's a difference between their calls for service when the ambulance rolls out the door and activate the ambulance and what they actually bill people for. Based on our deal and discussions with Greg and his staff, it appears that roughly 35% to 40% of their service calls are non-billable. So the patient or the beneficiary of those service calls never receives a bill from the ambulance service. And the reason I'm mentioning this is we talk about rates, this has a significant impact on rates because our staff that we're talking about taking on the ambulance is based off the service territory that we talked about earlier this evening, showed that black line extends for a lot of area outside the City of Pella. In addition, when you look at the staff, it's based on 1,900 service calls, but only if you were to back that off, only about 60% of them are billable. So that's the first thing to keep in mind when you talk about rates. Now, that 60% are roughly 1,150.
Before you...
Yes, Mayor.
Yes. I think I know some of the non-billable. What are the reasons for non-billable?
Yeah, I'm going to nail an easy one on here, and I'm going to ask chief to help me out on this. But an easy one is currently the ambulance has a practice that they have is anytime the fire department is paged, they go out on the service call as well. And when you look at it, and this would be an easy one, and I'm not necessarily talking about City of Pella fires, but this would be township fires or grass fires. If you go up to a grass fire and there's no patient to treat, no ambulance service, there's nobody to bill on the service. And so when you look at, that's one item that's non-billable run for the ambulance. They go out for fire anytime the fire department's page. Chief, if you can help me out on the rest of the non-billable calls that you guys do?
Sure, I can hit a few of them. Every time there's a car accident, PD responds, they have us come and check out for liability reasons if patients are okay. You know, if there's a, some sort of, they go to court later on, they need to have EMS present to do the thing. Well, they didn't necessarily want the ambulance there, so we can't charge them, so we're getting a refusal and we're leaving. And there's a lot of little fender benders all over the city that we go to for that. Another one you think of, grandma's got a life alert button, she rolls over and she hits it on accident. She didn't mean to hit it, you know, and she's surprised when she wakes up and we're standing over her bed, you know, she didn't mean to do that. But it's stuff like that that we get called to a lot.
Thanks. Makes sense.
But from a financial standpoint, you got to look at it as we're taking on a staff that's built towards 1,900 service calls. We're billing out for 60% of them. That's the first thing to consider in rates. The second item is of those 60% billable runs, what I call on there, 68% of the billable service calls are Medicare, Medicaid patients. And the reason I'm mentioning these on there is Medicare and Medicaid have set amount rates, reimbursement rates for ambulances. We have no discretion over that, and we're frankly limited on what we can charge for those ambulance calls on Medicare and Medicaid runs. And so those two items are very key in determining rates. And so when it gets down to it, when you look at it as a very small percentage of your 1,900, A is a billable insurance rate, is a billable rate that the city council actually has some sort of authority on setting ambulance rates on. It's right around 360 billable calls a year, so of the 1,900. So please keep that in mind when we talk about rates, because there's some math that is going on here when we look at subsidy and what you could actually raise rates on that clientele and service calls, it's about 360 service calls a year that we have some discretion on as far as our rates that we're going to talk about this evening. Now, as the rates that we have that we're talking about tonight, we really look at the City of Knoxville's ambulance rate schedule, and we also look at what Mahask County charges for ambulance services as well. So our proposed rates that we are considering this evening is a combination really from those two entities. Now, before we go on, one of the things, we're going to talk a lot about finances tonight, you may be asking yourself the question of the service calls, if we had to charge and could theoretically charge of our 1,150 billable service run, which includes Medicare and Medicaid patients, what would we charge per ambulance run to have the cost of this ambulance service being covered by, I would call, ambulance calls? That amounts $1,160. So when we look at the rates this evening, and you see the proposed rates, and you see what the actual cost of the service is, you need to keep in mind that the cost to roll away ambulance out is $1,160.
Okay.
Medicare or Medicaid callouts, how often is there private insurance backing up what Medicare pays?
Sometimes. There's some monies that we can get as if they have like Blue Cross or Blue Shield as a secondary, but we're running in more and more as people have Medicaid as a secondary insurance. And we can't collect anything if they have Medicaid as a secondary to Medicare. And then Medicare also writes off a certain amount, so we're only able to come after somebody for a little bit of, a little bit of what's left for Medicare.
Very good questions. All right, let's go ahead and look at these proposed rates. What you see up on the big board on the far left column, when you say PCA, that's the Pella Community Ambulance, that's their existing rates. Now, it's my understanding what the ambulance has done for years is they've taken the publisher rates by Walmart, Blue Cross, Blue Shields, and they've adopted those for their rates. So basically, those would be the maximum reinsurance rates that Blue Cross, Blue Shield would pay. That's what the ambulance services has used for their rates. The middle column is what we're actually, the right-hand column, is what we're proposing for rates. And again, this will make a little bit more sense when we talk about the overall financial contribution. But as you can see here, as the various categories for ambulance calls that we have, our proposed rates are over here. It is important to note that the loaded mileage and the mileage reimbursement on ambulance calls, we can only charge patients for what's called a loaded ambulance call, so that means the patient has to be in the ambulance as well on that. And as you can see, what we're proposing for this, and we'll explain this once we look at the financial subsidy that we have and also consideration of the territory. When you just look at gas prices, for instance, and also repair and maintenance and wear and tear on these ambulances, it's very, very expensive. We're proposing to go up to $29 per loaded mile for reimbursement for our service. And again, this will make a little bit more sense when you start taking a look at our overall territory as well as the financial subsidy that's being proposed by the City of Pella. So let's go ahead and start looking at some of these comparisons. What we have listed on this slide, same categories for ambulance services, City of Pella is on the left-hand side of council where to adopt these rates, the City of Knoxville is right here in the middle column, and Mahask County ambulance service is over here. Now, a little bit of play on the rates between Mahask County and Knoxville is you got to look at that per patient, per mile patient charge as well, and that's a significant factor on the rates. So even though the agency may be a little bit higher than Mahask County, the loaded mileage charged by Mahask County is significantly higher than the City of Knoxville. But these were the two cities that we utilize when we looked at benchmarking rates that we came up with our proposed rates. And I think what you'll find when you look at the numbers is we believe are right in the midst of both of these entities. It could be argued that we're a little bit lower potentially than both of them, but due to this being the new service, I don't want to make those types of statements just yet. So what we also have over here, this is comparison purposes, and generally with cities, this really depends on the city, but a lot of ambulance departments are ran out of the fire department. And sometimes the cities, the way they look at it is they have a certain amount of subsidy they always had for the fire department, and now they're operating the ambulance service out of it. And somewhat of the subsidy is just embedded within the municipal government. That's a philosophical decision by the city councils on that as well. We believe that's what's happening up in Newton, it's a little bit higher of the subsidy for fire and ambulance in Newton on it as well, and that's why the rates are lower. There's other cities that would be very comparable to rates. There's also cities that would be higher in rates. Basically, any city that struggled with ambulance service and they've had to go up to a private entity for ambulance rates are paying significantly higher than the rates that we're showing up here on the big board. So it's really kind of all the board as far as ambulance rates, and it really depends on the philosophical approach adopted by the city council. Okay, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, this is a key chart that we wanted to show you because this deals with patient billings on here. What you see over here is the rates that Medicare will pay or the approved rates that they pay for ambulance charges. The middle column is Walmart, Blue Cross, Blue Shield rates and the City of Pella rates. So when someone utilizes the ambulance, it's very likely from insurance, if they have bracketed insurance, that in addition to their insurance rates right here, because our rates are higher than Walmart, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, that patient will also be receiving a bill from the City of Pella. So their insurance company will get billed and the patient will get billed for the additional charges as well. But once again, when you look at 68% of our calls up here are Medicare and Medicaid patients, the breakdown is about 57% of that, our majority of them are Medicare patients, about 11% of our service calls are Medicaid patients. And the Medicaid patients, if I were to show you the rates up here, you could just put $150 per ambulance charge up there, and it's significantly lower. But then we're going to get into when we talk about the financial numbers, there's also a grant at the state that's sponsored, funded by the state of Iowa as well as the federal government, that's called the Ground Medical Emergency Transportation Grant. That's meant to reimburse local governments for the cost of supply ambulance services to Medicaid patients as well. But the key takeaway is when you look at those Medicare rates and look at the reimbursement there, when you start talking about a significant portion of your cost to service or your runs, over 50% of your billable service runs are Medicare patients, that really puts a hamper or, and really, I'd say hamper, almost, puts a lot of limitations on the City of Pella as far as what you can do as far as raising rates for ambulance services. Okay, Mandy, do we have any additional charges? Slides on rates?
No.
Okay. Before we go on, the financial contribution or estimated contribution by the City of Pella for the ambulance services, are there any questions on rates?
Greg has been asking a question. I think we've talked about this in some of our meetings. If there's a doctor ordered transport of a Medicare patient from Pella to Des Moines, is that still at the Medicare rate?
It's still at the Medicare rate, yeah. And if they're Medicaid, it's at the Medicaid rate.
Okay. So all those rates go not only for emergency calls, but for transports too?
Yep, yep.
Okay, let's move ahead and talk about real numbers on this. Before we get started in talking about the city's contribution or projected subsidy on this, we want to make sure, and I want to emphasize again, the cash and investment accounts by the Pella Community Ambulance, we believe will be adequate to cover their outstanding liabilities. And we're going to go over what we believe that cash investment amount would be that would ultimately be transferred to the City of Pella. We also believe based off our review and working with Greg and his staff, that when we talk about that Ground Medical Emergency Transportation Grant, and that's really intended to reimburse us for the cost of the ambulance service and providing to Medicaid patients, we believe the annual amount would be about $125,000, $150,000 per year. The only problem with that is once we begin operations and why July 1st is very important from the state's perspective, July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2023 will be what we call the base rate setting year. That's the year that the state will look at your actual cost of providing ambulance services. And that'll be what they also benchmark to establish your rates for that program and how much of the ground medical transportation grants that you're going to be eligible for. So if you want to look at 2023 or through June of 2023, that's the rate setting year, then the state takes and the entire next year and the federal government takes and give themselves leeway to go in and audit your books, to ensure that those are your rates that you're charging. The following year is when you actually start being reimbursed for the cost of Medicaid patients. So the difficulty for us in looking at the financial numbers, we're about ready to show you, is we began operations on July 1st, you're not going to receive, we don't believe we're going to receive the Ground Medical Emergency Transportation Grant for two years. So please keep that in mind of these subsidies that we're showing or projecting to show. And I want to also talk about another item that's for budgetary purposes, and I'm going to preface this comment, this is completely out of the discretion of the city council and what's could be charged to rural townships that utilize our ambulance service. There is one entity, that's the City of Monizuma, has very similar issues to what we're experiencing right now with ambulance services. They have 2080 rural townships on it. And basically, with the rural townships, what they came up with is a formula where they are reimbursed by the rural townships at 20 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuations for the ambulance services. So that's an existing 2080 agreement. If you were to look at our rural townships plus the City of Lighton that we currently service with our ambulance service, we went into their evaluations. If you add up, this would be Lake Prairie, Summit, I'm probably forgetting Black, Black Oak, City of Lighton, I forget another township that they serve. They serve a lot of township scenarios.
Richland.
Richland, thank you. If you were to add up all the townships, City of Lighton, that amount I'm going to show you is $70,000 per year from each, from all those entities combined if we use the Monizuma formula. But we may get into this, and that's completely out of the discretion of the city council on it as well, but we just had to have something to start with for discussion purposes. So that's the amount that we're going to see tonight very soon. And then we also wanted to make sure that council's aware, if you recall, when we showed the rates and we showed what Medicare, Walmart, Blue Cross, Blue Shield would pay, for those cases where we actually bill patients and we run into difficulties with people paying for the ambulance services, we intend to use as far as a collection procedure as a statewide offset program. What that allows us to do is if you owe money on your ambulance bill, it allows us to put a hold on your income tax return from the state of Iowa until the ambulance bill is paid. So that's an enhanced mechanism, a collection mechanism that local governments could utilize to make sure ambulance charges are paid as well. We intend to do so, that would be up to the discretion of the city council. Our recommendation is, it says this is completing the service for us, to start off doing it and actually see what those collections would be with it as well. But that ensures or helps us ensure that we do get back bill revenues for the ambulance service as well. So before I go on, and I also want to state, the financial numbers that I'm showing you on here do not include any additional administrative allocations or allocations such as our dispatch services. This is just the ambulance service that we're bringing on, and we're not proposing any additional administration to accommodate the ambulance as well. So everything here is the direct cost of operations of just the ambulance we're getting ready to show, city council. So questions before we move on to the financials? Okay. Let's go ahead and go through the financials, Mandy. Okay, if you look over at the far right column, that is the 2023 estimate, so this would be the fiscal year 2023 estimate that we believe will cost the City of Pella. If you recall during the city's budget process, we estimated a contribution of $300,000 next year to support the ambulance service as a city operation. We are still estimating the $300,000 for next year, but let me walk through some of the steps that we're proposing to get to the $300,000. And keep in mind, we're taking somewhat of a hit because we're not eligible for the Ground Medical Emergency Transportation Grant. If we were, we'd have another $150,000 of revenue up here that would lessen the burden to the City of Pella's taxpayers as well. As far as total revenue, if you recall, if you look at our proposed rates and compare it to what the Pella Community Ambulance currently charges, you notice there were some increases for services. And I don't, I think that's going to happen regardless to keep the ambulance service in operation. But as far as the total revenue, what we're looking at is we're looking at projected bill service calls revenues of just shy of $847,000 for the ambulance service. You could see what they're currently doing, and this is one of the crazy things with the ambulance service, their calls are up, but their bill service revenue is going down or is flat. And the reason for that is a higher percentage of the calls each and every year is Medicare patients on it as well. So while the calls are going up, they're actually losing revenue on those calls because they're capped on what they can actually bill people as well. So first, as far as total revenue, we'd be looking at just over $887,000. I want to explain those operating costs there, particularly the personnel cost and how we do health insurance. There's a pretty significant increase with health insurance in taking on the ambulance operation. Some of this is built on how we just account for operations. At the City of Pella, for each of our departments, we don't go in and estimate for each department what employee doesn't have insurance, what employee has single insurance, which is less, which employee has family insurance. What we do is we look at all our full-time employees, we look at the cost of operating the city's health insurance plan, and we come up with an average number. So from our standpoint, it doesn't matter if someone takes health insurance, if they don't, it obviously does financially for the City of Pella as a whole, but we don't get into the argument of trying to cost allocate down for the ambulance service or any other city service. So our number is on a lump sum basis, includes that just general number based on the number of employees that we're bringing over for. So that by and large would be the biggest increase for the personnel cost. The second increase is the ambulance employees would be eligible for IFRS as well for that, and that's a state retirement system. So those two costs right there would be the increased operational cost that you have with the Pella ambulance service. Now, as you can see, one thing to keep in mind with a nonprofit agency is this current year, based off their financials, we believe they're going to lose $300,000 in revenue. And the reason why I'm stating that, if you can keep that in mind, is that's a significant item for a nonprofit agency. It also begs the fact that when you look at continuing operations and being able to stomach a $300,000 a year loss, that's a significant issue for a nonprofit agency. So please keep that number in mind, it does make sense very shortly from us. For next year, we believe our debt income loss on the ambulance, and again, this is without the Ground Medical Transportation Grant, is going to be 340,000. We also have an ambulance we need to replace, it's about 210,000, so we're adding the cost on that. When you look at that, the overall increase and decrease in cash is $550,000. Now, as far as to help offset that next year from the Pella Community Ambulance, we believe the wind down of the ambulance, once everything's paid for, transition to the City of Pella, we believe their cash investment account's about 180,000. So as you can see, it's not quite enough to pay for this ambulance, but it's still something that we have there. And the reason why I wanted to point out that balance is if you look at, they have $180,000 in cash reserves, they're losing $300,000 per year. This emphasizes the need to take action for the ambulance to make sure... This emphasizes the need to take action for the ambulance to make sure they continue in operation on it. So if you look at it, they have $180,000, estimated annual loss is $300,000 on this. We believe this, absent any type of action by the city of Pella, this could be a crisis situation for the community as well, so please keep that in mind. But when you look at the $180,000, plus what we proposed, what Monizuma's charging, their township, we use that same formula, we came up with $70,000 for the rural townships. If you were to look at that and add in those two for next year, we'd be at $300,000 on it, is how we're coming up with the $300,000 subsidy. That's what we had legited for 2023, but we still believe that's an accurate estimate as far as what we know at this date. So I know that was a lot of information to take in, and with that, Mr. Mayor would be more than happy to answer any questions from the mayor and council. Keep in mind, after tonight, June 21st is the big day for the ambulance. We're going to be voting on two legal documents that transfers all their assets over to the city of Pella. We're going to be voting on the conditions offered, the conditions employment for city and ambulance employees to the city of Pella. And then we're also going to be voting on our rates to operate the ambulance service. So really with that, we're looking for a direction this evening, and what we're hoping to do is answer any questions the council may have. And I would say, because we're just looking at the rates, the majority of the council members, Councilmember Banster has been very kind with his time, has spent quite a bit of the time insisting on staff on this issue, but with the rates on this, we realize this is somewhat new information, so I would say, if anytime over the next two weeks there's questions by the council over the rates, or any types of issues we didn't cover tonight, do not hesitate to ask staff those questions. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for a direction this evening.
Okay, a lot of information. Let me say thank you to Councilman Banster for your extra time you put in on this. Appreciate that. I know you've been working alongside of Mike in meetings and getting all this information put together, so thanks for doing that. Any comments, questions?
I don't know why you'd say thank you for somebody who'd have to write a $300,000.
No, just to follow up on that, you know, my involvement is minimal compared to what
Mike has done and Cory and Stacy, so they deserve the thing, as well as the nonprofit Pella Community Ambulance Service for providing information that we've requested in many different forms, so the thanks has to be there. I think all the proposals we saw earlier about the staff and the transition, I think we're trying to do that all with a degree of kindness, I'll say that. But I still think as we bring them on, as we work together, that there's going to be hard times yet, you know, when we take a look at staffing levels and all those things, the ambulance is operated at a gold-plated standard, and financially, we might have to be at a bronze, I don't know. And I'm just saying, there's going to be a lot of discussions. We've got a huge benefit for the new folks coming on in terms of IFRS, and I think that we have, that they see some benefits, but there's going to be ongoing work this first year, and I think the service territory is going to be another big thing. The ambulance service has been covering the townships at no cost, so to speak, and now we're going to have to be looking at charging the other governmental entities that haven't had to do that before, and there's going to be continuing discussions, I think, with that. So I think we're starting on the good foot, but I think there's still going to be a lot of interesting discussions to come later on both our sides, so that's, I guess I want to keep that open as we go forward on that.
Is the purchase of a new ambulance like immediate? Greg, timeline on that?
I ordered it in November, and they projected they'd have a chassis in September. My last, they couldn't give me a set date that they would have a chassis, because that's part of the problems of getting chassis for that type of stuff, so who knows?
We'll be voting on a new ambulance proposal next meeting. Okay. Good job, Mike.
Thank you.
Last item is reserve peace officer compensation rate.
All right. For those of you at home, I'm on slide number 39 of this evening. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're talking about is our reserve officers. Similar to the Pella Community Ambulance, our reserve officers largely operated on a volunteer basis for the city of Pella for a number of years. And what we're here to talk about now, I also think they've done a yeoman's job for the community, and the community owes them a big thank you for their service over the years. What we're talking about this evening is the compensation for the reserve program. We're also proposing some internal changes as well, where with the reserve officers, a lot of the scheduling that they've done on their own for private events has been taken care of by the reserve officers. And I would say, as far as the scheduling and the purview of the oversight, it's much more in line with the Pella Police Department. It hasn't been an issue in the past. They've operated exceptionally for the city of Pella for a number of years, but there are being some changes that we are requesting, we've been requesting for the future when we look at future operations for the reserve program. So that's really the reason for the proposed change that we have this evening. But currently, our reserve officers are paid a dollar per year, and it's going to be, my understanding, and Chief helped me out trying to explain their compensation, but they do a lot of private events, a lot of times when you go to either Pella High, Pella Christian, or Central College football games, and you see police officers there, they are reserve officers. And what has happened is the reserve officers have contracted, program of the reserve officers have contracted directly to Pella High, Central, and Pella Christian to provide police coverage for those events. The fees that they've earned from that have gone into kind of a potter kitty that they use to buy their own equipment over the years. What we're proposing to do, and really for liability purposes on a go-forward basis, is all that scheduling will be done out of the chief's office on this, and the police administration on it as well. So when we look at that, we're actually going to be the entity that bills Pella High, Central College, Pella Christian. What begs the question is, with the reserve program on it, before they've kind of shared all their funds and they've used it to buy equipment, what we believe is probably the right thing to do with our reserve officers, since we're billing the agency, is to pay them directly. We're proposing to pay them $25 an hour for their services at these events. We would also bill each one of those entities out at $25 per hour with that. And so, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, with that, if council were to approve this, and it's a little bit more than just these private events, or not private events, in the case of Pella High, it's a public event on it, but oftentimes, like in the case of tool of time, we need additional help from our police department. We incorporate the reserve officer program, they never charged the city for that before. And so when you keep that in mind, if you look at, as far as the total revenues from our program, we're estimating they'd be over about $3,300. We have a breakdown on what our expenses would be for this, but overall, it's a relatively minor subsidy of $4,500 a year. We believe $4,500 per year is justified for liability purposes for running a reserve officer program. And so what we're proposing to do, Mr. Mayor's pay a reserve officer $25 per hour that they serve, we would actually bill out these entities that we use for reserve officers. If council were to approve this, we'd have a net expenditure subsidy of around $4,500 that we would need to proceed with, which we believe is very manageable. But once again, the overall goal of this is really for liability purposes on a go-forward basis for the reserve programs. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We'd more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this side.
Okay. What happens if a reserve officer is injured covering one of these events? Is that on his own insurance, or does the city give some kind of coverage?
Yeah, it's for these reasons that we feel we need to, I want to be careful, because the reserve program has been just exceptionally run over the years. But as for those questions that you just asked, what happens, they're covered under the city's workers' comp insurance, but we want to make sure that there isn't any questions if we do have an issue on if the officers are covered or not, and that's one of the key issues when we talk about liability. We want to make sure there's no issues in liability on who they're working for as well. So that's one of the reasons for the change, probably the key reason for the change, but they would be covered under the city workers' comp insurance. That's why it's important that the chief's office and his staff schedules these events as well on it. So it's for issues like that that we, that's really the genesis for this change that we're proposing.
Thank you.
So I see three officers between 20 and 30 years of service. I like change. Is that going over okay with them?
I'm going to let Chief McShay answer that question.
No, it's a great question, and something we obviously consider moving forward. You know, we've got a great crew there, they understand, you know, that change is one of those things that we're just going to need to incorporate. They also understand the importance of bringing in a paid program, a paid structure, and probably more importantly, you know, obviously they're getting paid directly now, so that's a direct benefit to them and their families, but they no longer need to worry about building up this pool so that they can afford a new shirt or new gun belt. That's going to be part of the police department's budget now on a go-forward basis. The good thing is, this program has already stood up, it's been stood up for years, all of the equipment is already there, so we don't have a large expense to cover, you know, equipping new officers. In fact, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think they're a very pleased, should the council consider this going forward.
And then the other question, previously, they were paid a dollar a year?
Yes, sometimes three cents after taxes.
As I say, are they already employees, or are they contract?
So they are, under IOC, they are considered employees of this municipality.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I think we're here for approval.
I think Chief McShay had one request for council's consideration.
So most of these events are kind of geared towards fall events, you know, football games, prom, that type of thing, and we are, because we're waiting on council's direction, we have actually two events that are billable at this point. I've already had discussions with those entities, they're actually surprised that it's been a $15 rate for this long, so they're very on board, supportive of that rate change. But the question then begs, what I would ask the council to consider is making this effective as of April 1st. That's going to cover the prom date, that's going to cover tool of time, and we can direct our staff to give them some retro based on those events that they've already worked beginning this fall.
I think that's reasonable. I'm sure that's reasonable, so I'll include that in the form.
We'd like to, and that's assuming that we don't have any HR issues upon that, but assuming that, that we can work it, we'll take council's direction to go back retroactively April 1st.
Stacy can fix that.
Anything else? All right, I will entertain motion to adjourn.
Support.
Hopkins Banster, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the rule.
Hopkins, is that four?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
We are adjourned.